This conference will now be recorded.
Like to call the two order, the regular council meeting on September 6, 2020, January 2, at we'll say rounded off to 7:00 PM. All rise for the Budget Region?
A presentative is due to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, a nation under individual with liberty and justice for all.
Any additions or corrections to the agenda tonight?
Couple requests, Mayor. Can we briefly talk about under unfinished business habitat for humanity request? We were supposed to get more information on that?
We can, we did bring back that ARPA wouldn't work for it.
I think we should probably make a decision one way or another, maybe, huh? I don't know.
Okay.
Yeah.
Maybe we just.
You could add that to.
Leave somebody.
Whole business?
Unfinished.
Unfinished. So that would be B.
Yeah.
Habitat. Anything else?
And then new business, could we put Park Host and discuss some of that stuff briefly?
Park Host where? Just in general?
Just in general.
Yep. C, new business, Park Host discussion.
Thank you.
Anything else? If not, would anyone like to make a motion to approve the agenda with the two additions? The Habitat for Humanity and the Unfinished and the Parks Host discussion and new business?
I'll move to approve the agenda.
No move, is there a second?
Second.
Counselor Norman, second. Would you call roll, please, Stephanie?
Counselor Webb?
Aye.
Counselor Norman?
Aye.
Counselor Allen?
Aye.
Hallmark?
Aye.
I'm sorry. Okay. I should carry.
I should. Any presentations tonight? None. Mayor's report. It's been quite a while since we've had a little packet trivia, right? You know? I know, I know, I know. Well, it's my first day in school, too. So. I'm not going to ask you this first question. Because you're the liaison for the Parks Committee.
Huh.
So I will ask Counselor Norman. What is the name of the new campground, proposed campground at the lake titled?
Agon Will?
Yes.
Snap!
Oh, good job, Don.
Very good.
Yeah, well, I think it's just a working name, but.
Yeah. Let's see. Counselor Allen, what's the name of the manager of Stuck Stewart State Park?
Yeah, I don't know. Can't remember. It's in there, I don't remember it.
Aaron Rances is his name. Okay. He was supposed to be a guest speaker at the last Parks meeting. He was not able to make it. Okay. Question number three, this is for you, Counselor Ash. What's the name of the planning contractor that we may hire to work on the UGB analysis that continue with that?
I don't know.
Anybody else want to guess? Winterbrook. Yeah. Very good, Counselor Dale.
That wasn't her question.
Yeah, it wasn't his question. I was going to ask the fourth one to Dale, but. So I'll just throw this out to whoever wants, whoever knows it can pipe up first. When and where is the first Marketing 101 session?
It's the 11th of September.
Twelve.
13th of September here at City Hall.
Very good.
I didn't even look.
Yeah, you did good.
Posted on the city website, too, I believe.
It's been posted a few places.
You guys did pretty good. Okay. That's all I have from my mayor's report.
I had 11th on the brain because I'm going to Woodburn Drags with my dad.
Oh, okay.
Maybe that's where 11th came from.
Could be. And then I believe I have the choice of citizen of the month for next council meeting. So just to announce that in my mayor's report, too. Okay, are there any council committee meeting reports tonight?
Mine's next Thursday, or this Thursday, so I don't have any.
I attended the August Parks Committee meeting. They are very excited about getting the grant funding, so they're waiting on the final decisions on that. They did have a few requests for staff, which I've passed on, it's already in the works. So things about the peace tree, getting that put on the website, and also having an ordinance about the permanent care of it, I guess that was part of the expectation when we were granted the honor of having it. So that'll be coming up, and then they are going to have Josette at the next meeting just to discuss a few things, the grant, stuff like that.
Okay.
Did you get a chance to pass on the idea of fixing up a boat ramp or anything down there in Anderson Park?
Um, yeah, it hasn't been discussed much. I know that they know the ramp and the docks are an issue. So I can ask them for that specifically, could be put on our agenda.
It was an idea we were talking about.
Yeah, and it's included in our priority list, too.
Yeah, to send it to the committee.
Oh, they are very excited to hear that there may be other options for having the ADA access at Dewey. So they didn't know that something like a lift would ever be feasible, so they're pretty excited to hear that that might be doable. So they're going to plan to work on that.
Excellent. Okay, thank you, Shree.
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, okay. Go ahead, Dale.
Sorry. Yeah, I met with the Public Works Committee on August 23rd. We had been there with some maps of the city, starting to talk about our sidewalks and trails, connectivity around town. I've been talking with Josette, and it's really incumbent upon me to bring this back to council. We need your input. We envision the Public Works Committee taking this project and fleshing this out for councils and, you know, between staff and the committee and our input, hopefully we'll kind of have, we want maybe call it a master plan, but maybe a working plan as we have fee and lieu monies and as maybe we have other funding sources to put in sidewalks or trails to connect our town together. And I know I've been pushing this, but I need feedback from the rest of the counselors if this is something that you feel is worthwhile for this committee to be working on. And that's a pause, that's a pause for input here, guys and gals.
Yeah, I jotted some of what you said down, Dale, and let me reiterate, you're looking for input for a working plan for funding to connect sidewalks to streets and vice versa. What kind of timeframe are you wanting from us to get back to the committee?
Well, what I'm asking for is, as the liaison of the Public Works Committee, this is the feedback, we kind of initiated this process, but it was pointed out to me that I really need to be concluding my other counselors in this decision process, that this is something you as a counselor would endorse, the Public Works Committee moving forward on. This is kind of part of this liaison process, that we need to lay out with the committees that really ideas should probably be coming from council or staff, they can originate off committees, but then we need to bounce them back to the council and say, yeah, we agree with you, or no, we wouldn't have funding for this, it's a great idea, but we need you to go in a different direction. And so that's where I'm at here tonight, is for the other counselors, is to be in the loop and, you know, hopefully supportive of the Public Works Committee, just kind of fleshing out the philosophy of this, hopefully maybe, yeah, the different funding sources that we could come in, how we would build this out over time, and, you know, things can always be subject to change.
So, so if I could interject one thing, part of what staff was talking to Counselor Webb about is council really needs to be the driver of the committee's work, because when we don't have you guys giving them work to do, they come up with kind of their own thing, which then they start working on it, and it might not be backed by council for staff to also work on it. So part of, we're hoping to have the get together in October of the, and whoever can make it can make it from the committees and the council and go over the liaison process, because what we're finding is left to themselves, the committee will come up with whatever they think needs to be done in the city instead of council driving them to investigate and do footwork for what council wants staff and the committees to pull off. So that's why he's bringing it back to you guys, like, we gave them the maps of where the connectivity is missing to kind of start that discussion and talk about how do we want to tackle it? Do we want to tackle it like all the collector's streets, get sidewalks first where we know neighborhoods are filtering to one street and then getting them safely to the school or the public areas, kind of, they're going to be kind of talking all through it, so that's why Dale's bringing it to you guys, is, are you all on the same page that that's what they're doing? That that's what we're asking of them, is kind of what we're talking about.
Do you want ideas, Dale, or just a general consensus to let them chew on this a little more in depth?
Mostly the general consensus, but one that makes you in the loop here, that they are doing this work. I mean, if you had a red flag that were to come up, JR, that, oh, hold it, we don't want them working on that, you know, then this would be the time. I don't see why there'd be a reason for that in this instance, but it could be in a different project. But yeah, general consensus, and then we'll keep moving forward, start bringing product back to the council.
Well, I can speak on it briefly, just my opinion without an in-depth thought on it today was, from talking about this before, we were going to talk about a level of money we hit in the pot before we spend it, we haven't come up with that quite yet. Obviously, want to do what makes the most sense for the most amount of kids for safety, it was my biggest concern, no matter where it's at. But I also would like to caution, and maybe you can relay it to the committee, if you got a group in a development that's paying the bill, and we run off with that money and do it somewhere completely else without nothing in that area, it might not sit real well for that neighborhood also. So I don't know if there needs to be a split, or, you know, if there's a collector in that area where most of the funds are coming from, maybe that one goes first. You know, how do you, how do you do it fairly, I guess would be my question to the people that are paying the bill on, I mean, obviously, they chose not to put it in, so there is that. Maybe we make it clear to them, if you choose to pay this, you might not get it in your neighborhood for who knows when.
The ones that we've sold, I think, are clear on that.
Oh, they're clear. If they want it, they put it in.
Yeah.
And some are. If they don't want to have to go through that effort, they understand that it's going to go where it's the greatest good for the city and its citizens. And that's how it is across the state with everywhere that has a fee and lieu program.
Right. Well, the greatest good, in our opinion, is different than their opinion, so maybe if we did have a roadmap and it's written down somewhere, it'd be easy for everybody to say, well, this was our plan from the beginning.
Sure, and I think if you guys want to develop some sort of resolution that says, this is what this money is earmarked for, and we have a goal of hitting this mark before we spend it, we could easily do something like that, so that whatever you guys are, it's written down what your decision is, so that staff can follow it and we can use it to show others why we're not pulling a project off if the money's not for that cap or. But they're kind of just chewing on, like, where do we start? How many feet do we actually have missing? Kind of where is, we're only getting an infill lot here and there versus it's multiple homes on one drag? Does that make sense? Where the money's coming from is kind of a picture, too.
It'd be very similar to the plan that's in place for road improvements and where the SCA funding goes, it goes where it makes the most sense qualifies, not where John Smith wants it or Joe Schmal. It's where it makes the most sense for the city as a whole.
And the funding, meeting the criteria, I mean, that would be one thing, piggybacking an SCA safe routes to school grant with a little bit of our funding to get a whole entire block done.
Sure.
That's the kind of thing we're hoping comes out of this.
Yeah, so there's multifaceted answers to.
Yeah.
What we're going to do and how we're going to do it, and so.
But kind of just getting them chewing on it, and ultimately, what we're hoping comes out of them chewing on it, because they're pretty thorough people, is somewhat of a list like we had with the road projects. So should funding became available, here's the list of the 10 top connectivity issues we'd like to solve in the next five years. And then just keep doing it like we do with the road projects where they, it comes back to the Public Works Committee, comes back to council for recommending and kind of an approval of it, and then staff rolls with whatever the plan is. So that's kind of what we're hoping to get out of it.
I would think our school bus drivers would be a good resource for some of this, maybe where they see issues, you know, too.
Yeah.
Yeah, Counselor Webb is Mayor Hallmark. I've heard in the last 10 minutes about three different topics. I've heard the relationship with the committee liaison, the council and the, and the committee itself, and then Josette mentioned that she'd like to have maybe a liaison workshop.
Well, we're, it's the, it's really the one we never had in.
In October.
Yeah.
To talk about the, the protocol of, and the, and the, you know, how the relationships works between the liaison, the council, and the staff. And we talked about that a couple of years ago, in fact, it was brought to us by staff, the last council, how we did that. And then I, I also heard about a workshop on sidewalks, and we got into, you know, that end of it. And so I'm kind of confused.
So if you, so we gave them maps to start doing the footwork of where we're missing sidewalks.
Okay.
So that's what Dale's bringing to council, is like, hey, we're letting Public Works Committee chew on this, where, you know, the public's view, because they represent the public, of where we should start putting them in, all this. The meeting in October is just finally the committee dinner that we promised when the pandemic hit, where we're going to sit down with whoever from the committees can come, the council and staff, and go through that protocol. It's like how the information goes through the cycle, gets back to council, council blesses it, it goes to the committee to chew on it, comes back as a recommendation, staff works on it like that, just to get everyone on the same page. We're hoping to kind of slow the idea, they keep going down idea trails where staff doesn't have any idea what's, why that's important, council has not blessed it, we don't have any funding for it, so they're kind of running a little rogue, and I'd like them to start working on what council really wants them to work on. So that's why Dale's kind of starting to follow the protocol in the hopes that this would be how all of you would bring stuff to each other when your committees have ideas.
And we were going to have a future workshop on sidewalks, too.
Well, that's different.
Oh.
What Dale's asking is for you guys to say, yes, we want the Public Works Committee to work on a sidewalk, sidewalk and trail master plan of saying, this is the inventory in the city right now, this is where we want everything to be connected, this is what makes sense for safe routes to school, or ADA access, or whatever, feeding pedestrian traffic for this development. The sidewalk work session that you're thinking of is actually the Title IX Amendment, which will be in the future.
Okay.
Completely separate. That is the code for how improvements go in with development and who's responsible for maintaining it. This is a policy, what Dale's asking for is for you guys to say, yes, we want the Public Works Committee to work on developing a policy for where the improvements will go in when the city has funding. So Title IX is citizens doing development, he's asking for a policy for when the city does development.
Gotcha.
We're seeing it as something similar to the roads plan, where you say you have this many miles of trail, this many mile of sidewalk, this much missing connectivity, kind of like Ben does it, where he shows you the different maps and where things are good and bad, we're going to end up doing that with sidewalks and trail connectivity as well.
Okay. We have a general consensus from the council to have Public Works move forward?
Yeah, I think it's difficult to say anything super concrete without knowing the scope or feasibility of any of it, but that kind of gets in the chicken and egg game, and so we need them to do some work on it to know that, and I think the issue, like, the goal of, of the project is obviously extremely important one, so, yeah, I think so.
You have our consensus, Counselor Webb, to move forward with that.
Great, thank you. I'll keep moving on with committee report then. There's also lingering within, in what the committee, and this is where Josette comes from, of where these ideas come from, somebody that came off the Budget Committee, so they are still wanting to remind the city council that they'd like to see a salary range cap put into place for city staff. And that is on one of our priority, or is on our priority list, one of our items, so. And they did explain that a little more to me, I was envisioning a little further than just range caps, like they're bringing up, they just want to see, you go to our website, or I guess it'd be our handbook, and you'd see for a certain job, this is the wage range. And of course, it'd always be subject to change as time goes on, so. And then here's the other item. After we did the tour of, oh, they're going to do another tour of the gas system down at the sewer plant, once it's up running again, it wasn't running when we took our tour. But, so I think they were setting that up with staff, just setting a date when they had a pretty good idea that it's going to run, and then whoever can show up could show up. I haven't seen a date yet. The other thing came up during our water plant tour was wanting a list of the chemicals that are used in our water plant. And I think at the time, pictures were taken of the drums, the labels, so I don't, like, we had our discussion, there wasn't really anything, I think, that's hidden, other than, I think, the chlorine tanks, I don't think we walked by one of the gas tanks there, but for some reason, some of the committee members, they actually, I think they floated a recommendation back to staff, wanted the list, and I couldn't head them off, let's just put it that way. You know, and really, we're asking, why do you want this? I mean, and one thing that came out was, well, I got a bottle of top, everything's on the back of this bottle, and I can see this, and, yeah, but also, we're governed by state rules and regulators that, for our water quality, so I guess this kind of just drives the point of whether you wanting them to go any further down this path or not.
So I've shared with Dale, I have a few concerns. We do a water quality report, so we, by state law, have to put out everything that's found in the water and the levels of it. Our Homeland Security visit would say, we don't tell people what we store where, just for the safety of the city and not making ourselves targets of someone coming to get a specific chemical to do something with it, or knowing a specific chemical is volatile. And I pushed back on it, saying, you know, what are your, do you have concerns? And really, what I believe Mr. Calhoun was looking at is he's seen in some other cities, they're using chloramine, which is an ammonia-chlorine combo, and that they're, he's seeing in his research that there's issues with that. And I said, well, if you want to research chemicals coming down the line and give council a heads up on why we shouldn't go to that in the future, the pros and cons of it, I'm all for that. My concern comes with some exhaustive list, one, for the time it will take for what's the real end value of knowing every little thing we use at the water plant, because we'll have to, if we're going to do a thorough job, that isn't just a five-minute deal. And two, I don't, they don't, other than they just want to know, I don't have a valid reason to, like, list all of that for anybody except DEQ or Association of Water Utilities, so I kind of pushed back on it. So I said, well, they could always ask council to have staff do it, and if council deems it's okay, then we'll do it. So.
I mean, I think if they have specific concerns, they could provide a list of things they are concerned about, and give it up to council and staff to decide.
Well, and I think once Michael, I gave Michael an answer via email, and then at the meeting Dale had said that Michael was kind of backtracking, like, oh, I don't want to be, it doesn't have to, you know, this isn't super important, but the other ones are like, why can't we know? So they kind of dug their heels in, like, feeling like we were hiding something, which we walked you through it, Michael took pictures of everything, so we weren't hiding.
First, out there for free all the time, the labels are still on them.
Yeah, not all of, I mean, right, the Pass X ones are the blue ones that we give away, and that's soda ash and not, you know, super volatile.
So this is an official request from the whole committee? This is one person kind of?
Michael originally requested, I believe, and Dale can comment, I believe they did, I haven't seen it, but they did formally as a committee then vote to request it.
I don't think we have anything to hide, per se. Wouldn't that fall under the Freedom of Information Act to get a copy of the report to DEQ if they wanted to?
Well, it won't list it on the report to DEQ the same way, like, the different processes is how we list it for DEQ, they're just wanting one collective list. And so if that's something that council thinks they should see, then we will put that together. I just didn't want to waste staff's time without, like, a benefit at the end, like, what do you, what is the concern? Like, help me understand, I wanted to know from Michael, like, what value does this have for staff to spend their time on it? Is there something you're thinking you're find that we didn't show you in the pictures or something, like, I wanted more, and there wasn't more?
If council decided in favor of it, you're also going against the recommendation of Homeland Security. Keep that in mind.
Because typically, we don't give that stuff out just for safeguarding, that someone doesn't come and try to bust through the gate and steal something they want for some purpose. That's kind of why we just say.
Have a copy of that Homeland Security note that says, don't share chemicals or don't share storage?
Again, the Homeland Security.
Yeah, they came.
Is not public record.
They came and did a tour of all, they basically came and did a vulnerability tour. So we have records. So we have record from them of all the places and things we should safeguard, beef up, secure more, right? All that stuff. So that's why they, they don't like us to give out materials lists because then people know where materials are housed. And it's not because the material is dangerous. It's because it's a good quantity of some material that who knows some cuckoo could come after. I guess is why.
Donnie?
I was thinking that would probably, we used to have to keep MSDS sheets. And all that would be filed unless the city doesn't have to do that.
I'm not familiar with MSDS. I'd have to ask Jeff.
Real safety data sheet.
Yeah, I don't know.
Which is, tells you about all you're supposed to have, every spray chemical you have, you're supposed to have a sheet.
Yeah.
In it and then to file. And you can also be part of a 1-800 call in type thing.
I mean, I could check with them if that's something you guys want to give out. If it was for some reason, like if I, that's the thing, I'm willing to help committees with their information gathering. It just seemed like a rabbit trail. Like what are we, where are we going to stop what we're doing? That's already on the list to do to catalog these things for, to what end, for what end is kind of what I asked.
I'll say the obvious. Michael's an environmentalist. That's always looking for water quality issues or whatever. So he's looking to make sure that there's something safer that we could use. Maybe that's what he wants to do. I, I'm not sure. I haven't talked to him about it, but it seems like an odd request from the public works committee, but.
It's really not in their.
Curfew.
It's just a rabbit hole.
Yeah. So that's why I pushed it to you guys. Cause I was like, hmm.
So he went on tour and he took pictures of everything. So he's got the information really, right?
But he wants any chemical used there.
Like WD-40?
Perhaps. I don't know. I mean, it could be.
Motor oil, it's chemical.
Right. That's kind of where I pushed back on like, what's the end? Tell me what we're trying to solve and I'll help you figure it out. But there wasn't really a question to solve. So that's why I was like, hmm, then no. Cause I'm, I don't have time to go make sure we get all these things. Yeah. So.
I think my answer for that would be if it's under the Freedom of Information Act, you can make an official request on a personal note. But I don't know if that's really something that council's directed the committee to work on. So.
Right. And that's kind of why we're trying to get back to this routine because kind of left to their own accord. They'll come up with great ideas and some not great ideas and go down all of them. Right? I mean.
To be honest with you, I think we've lost a lot of committee members because we don't have enough.
Corrective.
Committee, uh, cohesiveness, I guess I would say. I don't see the committee members coming to council.
Yeah.
Maybe we need to go to more of the committee member, even if it's not our committee, just show up once in a while, maybe.
Down there.
Sure.
Or, yeah, something. Yeah.
Something, you know.
Yeah.
I think I'm normally all for transparency, but I think that your concerns are super valid. Um, and so, yeah, I, if, if their whole goal out of it is just to determine if there's anything of concern, I don't see how that wouldn't be solved by providing a list of items of concern.
Right.
Us to review.
Right.
So unless there's a new goal that they haven't conveyed.
Well, and I think anything can be improved, whether we have the capacity or the funding to improve them in the way some people want. I think that's a reality. Some people never look at and they go, well, we shouldn't use chlorine. We should use this and this. Not looking at, is it cost prohibitive? What's the access for us? Do we have the capacity to learn? Our staff learn a new thing. So it's kind of like a catch 22. I'm willing to learn and be new, but not every little thing has to change just because there's something, there's some new way to do it out there.
Versus osmosis system or something?
UV light? I don't know.
That come from the people who don't support, uh, rate raise.
Right. Right.
So that's challenging.
Yeah.
Now you got me thinking, what are we using down there at that plant?
Well, no, and I think that's the hard part is Michael was like, well, I've taken pictures of everything. I know it's not anything dangerous. And then the other committee members are like, we have a right to know, you know, they're feeling like put off, but I'm just, it's just a weird, it was a weird thing.
My coffee tastes okay, so I don't worry about it.
Well, just to be clear though, it's not a public information request legal, legal issue?
No, he, their committee requesting it is not.
What I'm saying is that it can individual request it legally.
Yes, however, that list does not exist. Therefore that request will be denied.
Yeah. Cause we don't have that list like that. We have in the different processes, the different chemicals we use are listed. There's no collective, like here's everything we use in this hundred.
Inventory.
Yes. Hundred thousand square feet. It's not by location or.
And we are not required to create a document for a request.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I think there's his answer. If he really wants to know, he can.
Okay.
Anything else, Councilor Webb?
Dale's bringing the long, long list tonight.
Yeah, I am done. Well, thank you, Councilor Webb. And I also want to take this opportunity to thank you for your efforts. Uh, lately in the last couple of weeks, uh, the helping out with the crack ceiling in that public works department. That was a lot of work you guys did. And thank you for helping out Dale.
You're welcome.
Okay. I'm going to attend a library board meeting tomorrow night. And then a senior board meeting on Friday morning. So I'll report back the next council meeting on those. So it looks like we're done with the committee meeting reports. Any topics from the floor tonight? One?
It's from Dave Cook. Police and other items.
You want to come forward to the, Dais? Yes.
You kind of get official now.
Name and address for the.
For the record date.
Dave Cook, 1247 Second Avenue, Verdundy, Oregon, 97064. So basically it's about, a lot of it is about police or the lack of. And I mean, we're doing all kinds of other things in the city and I've been here off and on for many years. My grandfather was the meat cutter down here at Sam's, the market down here. But right now, having Sergeant Carnahan basically pull every shift he can possibly pull. I mean, my neighbors across the street, I live on the second, people right across the street, they're in their, in the upper sixties, have a landscape business. They got a notice on their front door that they can't be living in the trailer in the driveway when they're not, they're not. It's their trailer. When they first came out here and were working on the house, they stayed in that while they did the downstairs, they moved into the house. Ended up close to a year. Standing in that front yard, if you look here right across Jim Proud's property, you can see a motor home that has so many damn meth heads staying in it. They're walking up and down my street between myself and Kurt Potter. I'm out there all hours of the night. I've got security cameras and they go off when, when somebody's out there. I'm out there all hours of the night telling these guys, get the hell off the street. The guy's got a pair of bolt cutters sticking out of a backpack, went past the house three times up and down. I'm not doing anything. And I mean, sorry, but I said, you're a thieving son of a bitch. Get off the street while you still can. And we went back and forth and he came walking at me and I said, are you that stupid? That's a 45 in my right hand. I should not be doing this. We should have cops. Where's the funding for the police? Man, we've got parks. We've got sidewalks we're talking about. And I'm sorry, I get irritated with this. But we've got all this garbage we're talking about when we're not even protecting the citizens in this town. What is with this? You can't, I'm not going to go to prison because I saw a scumbag coming at me on my street. A guy carrying a pair of bolt cutters this long. I wasn't about to let him hit me with them. You can bet I would have emptied my Glock into him. But not be the guy out there. I should be able to pick the phone up and say, hey, this guy's been up and down the street with a pair of bolt cutters three times. And somebody should be up there. Why don't we have police in this town? But we've got beautiful parks and what we're going to fix the sidewalks. And all this other bullshit, when we've got stuff that we, we need to protect some of our people. Kurt and I would not be out there in the street confronting scumbags that are living in a freaking motor home right between first and second on Clatsop. They'll go bother the people across the street from me that are like 65 or more years old because they've got a trailer in their driveway. But I'm not kidding. You can stand, because I was there before I came here. Standing at their front yard and look to your right, you can see the motor homes sitting there with all these meth heads. Nobody does a thing about it. We need police in this town again. We don't need citizens going out there and putting themselves at risk. I don't want to go to prison because some scumbag came after me or was going after one of my neighbors. Shit needs to start getting done in this town for the people. I don't give two shits about some park with the people that are looking here are afraid to go outside. I don't know if any of you are even going around talking to people, but by God, start talking to some of the people in this town. You know what I bought my mom for Mother's Day? A pump 410 shotgun. Then I turned around and gave her the Judd, the little revolver and told her, don't bother with that semi-automatic you've got. Dust it with one of these. I couldn't be worried about what's going on like that. We should be able to make a phone call and get a little bit of help. And again, I'm sorry for getting irritated, but this is bullshit. This town's going to have cops. Carnahan shouldn't be getting run ragged. What's, what's the story with all of that? Let's go mow a park. Let's go dig a ditch. But let's forget about protecting the people that we're doing that for. Can this go anywhere?
Hopefully in the near future it'll get better. So, and I understand your frustration.
I've been here a long time and I've seen where it's going now.
Yep.
And I'm not kidding. Right between first and second on Clatsop. It's an old motor home backed in between whoever the guy is on the, on second. And there's a, it's full of shitbags, scumbags, thieving son of a bitches that I should not be out there confronting in the middle of the night. It's not my job. When they stop by my property, you better go out there. They're over there digging through the guy's trailer across the street and stole the blower out of there. He uses for his landscape business. And nobody crews in these streets anymore. We don't even have a cop. And again, I don't blame them, but we've got funding for every other little bullshit thing in this town, but we can't put cops here?
Go ahead, Jared.
Dave, thanks for coming down. I know it's not easy and I.
And I know I get, I'm sorry.
I feel your frustration, but there's several issues you don't, I mean, respectfully, you don't know what you're saying because you don't know this side of it. But there is funding for the police. It's over $600,000. There were some personnel issues that by law I'm probably can't discuss. Josette could probably tell you what's in the paper was, the last paper kind of explained it. I don't know if you got a chance to read it. We just hired a, a person. It'll take about a year.
That's part time, don't they?
No, they're a new recruit. They're in training with Carnahan because you have to have a license to be a cop. You have to go through the academy. The academy's full till October, November. So then he goes through a six or eight week academy. Then he comes back after that and he's got his own patrol car. We got a couple of people.
So that gives two though, I mean.
We got a couple of people out with some injury issues. Um, we all wish we had more police here. Not just you. Right now we are at, uh, we do have a county that's on halftime. It's in the budget paid for. So there's supposed to be a county sheriff around.
I've never seen.
I seen him pulling somebody over at 6:30 the other night out past, uh, Big's Corner there the other night. So he is around a little bit. If you do call 9, have you called 911? No one responded?
I don't call 911.
Well.
No, it got to the point that there's nobody around. I called straight the dispatch and they, they tell you, there's nobody on duty. In fact, the one day when, uh, it was happening just outside the town here, I was talking to a county sheriff or deputy sheriff, whatever. And he said straight up, I'm sorry, but I seem to be the only one around. I can't come out. And I said, you don't need to come out. I'm wearing a 41 mag and I'll take care of it myself. I'll tell you, within 15 minutes, two of them came around the corner with the lights on. But yet they weren't going to tell them arrest the guy that had assault, rape, assault on police officers. And the cop's words to me was, and his exact words, Mr. Cook, you don't want to fuck with this guy. He's a bad guy. And I'm like, why not? I mean, I, again, I don't trust the county very much. I would trust a cop that knows the talent. I mean, to tell me I can't come out when they already knew who it was. They had his license plate number, everything. And they tell me, well, I seem to be the only one here. We can't come out until I said, well, I'm wearing a 41 mag. I'll deal with it. Boy, two of them that quick.
As far as the motor home and people living outside of code in our city, have you had a chance to come down to the city and make a formal complaint or request?
What I'm doing right now is hoping, I mean, if they're going to good honest people like the guys across the street from me, man in life in their mid sixties or upper sixties with a business, they go leave a note on their door that they can't be living in the trailer. Just because it's parked at the driveway, they're not living in it. They're living in the house that they put the note on. But, and again, I'm going to say standing right there, you look to your right, there's the motor home.
Yeah.
You can see it.
So that one's been, we've been in dealings with them and in court for over a year. The one that you're talking.
It's still full of meth heads.
Right. There's, you can't just go rogue and bust into someone's trailer and start pulling people out of it and arresting them. That is.
You can't go rogue and come and steal from my house, the neighbor's house and everybody else.
I'm just.
They don't have any police.
I'm just telling you what the law allows us to do and what it doesn't allow us to do. Does not, it's not the wild west. It will never allow us to go in there. We have to see what's happening. We have.
Isn't that Potter's property?
Yeah, it's their son.
Have you gone to Potter and said, hey, guess what?
On multiple occasions, sir.
Oh, and he's just paying those?
I can't get into the details of it because it's really their deal. That's what I'm telling you is.
But the amount of those guys, they're coming up and down my street. Cause now the guy down the street who also lost his job is dealing drugs. And so the cars are up and down that street. They'll go and they'll be there two minutes and they're gone. Then another one and they're neither. And so now those meth heads are walking down to his house constantly.
Yeah.
And of course they're digging. I had a guy in there to do work on my, on my sewage. They walked by in daylight and started looking through the back of his truck.
Yeah.
And of course I walked out and had very polite words, but I mean, we've got no help anywhere in this town.
Well, we are trying to do our best with our police with what we have, David. And know very well that myself and our staff and our council is very aware of what our police situation is. In fact, I've talked to Sergeant today. I talk to him almost every day, daily. Ask him how the new physician, Mr. Kendall's doing and he's doing fantastic. And Sean just put in 70 hours straight. So, so we're doing the best we can. On this audience participation, we only allow five minutes. So I appreciate, yeah.
All right.
I appreciate and understand your frustration. Thank you for coming forward.
Yeah, I just don't want to get in trouble for, you know.
Hopefully you don't have to do that. So.
So do I.
Josette, can we make a request to Sheriff Pixley to what county resources we do have that they spend a little more time up around that second and Clatsop and up on the Corial?
Fair.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Then you'll see someone drive by hopefully at night.
In fact, I told them they could park in my driveway and watch. I, I've told Sean that many times.
And we are watching too. Thank you, Dave.
That's what we're here for.
Okay, moving on. Set agenda for acceptance. Parks committee meeting minutes for June 2022. Parks committee minutes for July 2022. Any discussion or questions on those? Any discussion or questions on those?
I had no issues.
Anyone like to make a motion to approve those meeting minutes?
Make a motion that we approve Parks Committee meeting minutes for June and July twenty twenty two as written.
So moved, is there a second?
A second.
And seconded by Counselor Ash, would you call a roll, please step.
Counselor Ash?
Aye.
Counselor Allen?
Aye.
Counselor Norman?
Aye.
Aye.
Counselor Webb?
Aye.
Counselor Carey.
Okay, set agenda for approval. City Council meeting minutes for August fifteenth, twenty twenty two. City Council Work Session Meeting Minutes for August fifteenth, twenty twenty two. City Council Work Session Meeting Minutes for August seventeenth, two thousand twenty two. Any discussion or questions?
I have one on the August fifteenth, which I believe you weren't here that meeting. And they have you voting aye on a lot of stuff.
That was the one I missed?
All right, I just copied and pasted that. Oh.
Okay.
Correct that to absent.
When he is, you do have him as absent up above.
Yeah.
Break the vote apart.
Okay.
That's the only thing I've seen that didn't look right.
Anything else? If not, would anyone like to make a motion to accept these one meeting and two workshop meetings?
I'm moved to accept the council minutes for the August fifteenth meeting. And August fifteenth and seventeenth work sessions with the one noted change.
So moved, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Norman, would you call a roll, please step.
Counselor Hubbard?
Aye.
Counselor Webb?
Aye.
Counselor Allen?
Aye.
Counselor Ash?
Aye.
Aye.
Counselor Carey.
Okay, unfinished business, citizens' request, Food Bank, Susan Wagner.
Counselors, I am back. Susan Wagner, thirteen eleven Algarve Street, Birmingham, Oregon. I am here on behalf of the Food Bank, not the Senior Center, for turkeys for Thanksgiving. I think there was a little bit of confusion. At the last meeting that this was a formal request. That I think that you needed to get some information about the art of money and the availability to use it for this purpose. And so I am very excited forward to an update on fundraising. So I have a hundred dollars and then another hundred dollars. So we are four hundred dollars in between the match that's been pledged and the two hundred dollar donations. Council and staff, thank you very much. And so that puts us at a need of twenty one hundred dollars. We do have an additional three hundred dollars that's been pledged for when we get matched to it. You know, citizen match, whatever. What's not in the letter that's in there for you is that the city has volunteered to let us put some type of jar, whatever, at the pop up at Salmon Festival. Gorge Net has also reached out. They are talking about a donation and they are also wanting to put up some kind of signage and donation jar or whatever. Potentially having some kind of a raffle. Like I said, like it was this Mr. For Now, who's the president. He reached out to Joseph who directed it my way, had a great conversation. I said maybe like two, three months free. He goes, well, or big screen TV, flat screen TV, something. So we're still talking about that with him, but they've been very generous. Gorge Net is, is very much about wanting to support the community. So they have pledged a pretty significant, a goodly amount towards this as well. But we're still, we're still. We're still about twenty one hundred dollars shy. So like again, my request was for two thousand dollars on behalf of the Food Bank. As the city has done in the past and hopefully maybe a little bit more since there is inflation, everything's more expensive. So that is for your consideration, thank you.
So I looked into ARPA funds. It's going to be really hard to give it to for turkeys. Because they have nothing to do with COVID. Everything ARPA wants is COVID or some sort of loss of revenue, which they didn't do it in the years. They've skipped a couple of years, so it's harder to say they lost revenue because of COVID because they weren't even doing it then. But.
Are they a 501(c)(3)?
They are.
I thought I read in.
There isn't just a blanket 501(c)(3) because we looked into that for Habitat as well. And there isn't just a pass it through without conditions of saying it's lost revenue or loss of man time that you're recouping. Or COVID supplies or COVID outlay of staff. It's just weird rules that our attorneys are saying they think ARPA says, so. We do have contingency in the general fund. At budget time, which I don't think we've spent anything of contingency. This fiscal year was thirty two, four ninety seven is what's in general fund contingency. The last time you gave the two thousand, you had the timber fund. That fund's depleted quite a bit and we do have the timber project. So I would not advise us to take it out of there. That's the other kind of no strings attached monies.
I thought we shuffled ten more thousand from water and sewer into contingency at the last minute.
We did, it was at twenty one nine ninety, you're right.
Okay.
So it's twenty, it's thirty two, four ninety seven.
Oh, thirty two thousand.
Yes.
That's probably my bad hearing.
Oh, yeah, sorry. I didn't put a comma in there.
Yeah, so I heard it back too.
Oh.
Well, so we just typically fund this from the federal fund or somewhere in the years past.
It isn't an enterprise fund. They've done it out of general fund one year and they did it out of timber one year. When we had the logging sales, they used that money, the past council did.
And it's, there's nothing, it's not direct enough to say, well, we have, do we have more people using the food bank because of personal loss of COVID? It has to be like the food bank has to show loss of revenue.
Yeah, or we would, we would say nobody funded it because or they outlaid all their cash during COVID to pay for it. And now we're back feeling kind of like we did with the jamboree loss of revenue. If it was one of those where they used their funds and now that turkey fund was depleted, but it wasn't, it isn't as clear cut as like jamboree. When they didn't have any influx of vendors, they didn't bring in their money is how we proved we would give them the ticket sales or the rental sales of the space.
I can check with Sandy to see what that number is, if, what she has explained, there are more people in there serving a lot of families.
Yeah.
But it's not going to help them.
But I don't, I think, I think it's not apples to apples. Apples to apples is to make it really easy. If she said, we put three grand of our money into this and now our money is short and request of backfilling it via the ARPA. That would make more sense and be really clear and easy. Just be like, okay, it's like jamboree, right? They lost their funding mechanism during those years and then they, but they didn't even ask. So that's kind of the tricky part.
I'm not arguing with you, anything you're saying. I'm just saying what I read on the federal guidelines, I think they're going to come after us for a couple of thousand dollars for food. For our seniors and low income people. And when you, if you read the fine lines, they wanted half this money to hit the street level. They wanted therapy, they wanted this, they wanted that. I mean, it had a whole plethora, plethora of things. You look at these big cities, what they're spinning on, they're building gyms and stuff. I mean, it just seems silly that. Are we the only ones following the scared guideline and everybody else is a free for all? Because it seems frustrating when you read online what all this money is going toward.
Yeah, so the different pots of money had different strings attached. So schools and things like that, community programs like that were allowed to build gyms. Were allowed to do different things with their money. When municipalities, state and county governments got it, we had the fifth page narrative that we brought to you guys multiple times. That's the only narrative we have to go off of for our pot of money.
My argument being this COVID inflation is because people can't even afford a turkey dinner hardly, you know? That's just my, that's my argument. But I think we could find a way to, it sounds like we could find a way to do this no matter what pot of money.
Yeah.
Shuffle things around. So I'm not against giving them the two thousand dollars. I would vote yes if that's what the council wants to do. No matter how, wherever pot you feel more comfortable pulling it from, but I think we'll survive one way or another.
I think you have a safer bet giving them two thousand out of contingency and backfilling your own contingency with ARPA. Than you do to hand over two thousand dollars to an entity that's not the entity that was given the funds.
Okay, sounds like we have a plan.
Stephanie does not love it.
How many turkeys?
City, if this is an outlay of cash, right?
I'm not the one who has to justify.
Because the, we, we collected none of the ARPA funds for police staffing, which we know took a hit. So that's one area we never, we never transferred it for our loss of staffing during COVID. That's what I'm saying. So it's not like this is going to be missed or couldn't be backfilled if we need it for police or something that is a legitimate expense in ARPA.
Counselor Webb, what do you think?
Yeah, I kind of agree. If we're going to take any money, take it out of contingency.
Okay.
I agree. So are we wanting to stay with the two thousand or are we wanting to honor the small increase being requested?
What, you're needing twenty one hundred?
May I speak?
Yep, go ahead.
So with the donation from Gorge Net that they've, they've pledged plus being able to put out the jars at. At Salmon Fest. Mr. Frenell's suggestion was that it'll be used for any additional items that could be utilized for the families, things that they wouldn't normally get. Or simply be given to the food bank to be utilized in the way that they felt would be best for the citizens who are receiving those services.
Are we going to store the turkeys or was that vouchers from my memory?
So likely. The, the RMS, if they're able to get them, is going to be the supplier and they will.
Oh wow, they're liable to be three times as much you can get them at Winco.
Well, the, the commitment was likely two hundred turkeys and seventeen fifty a turkey approximately. Some people want smaller ones, some people want bigger ones. Depends on the family size. So I, I believe, you know, the two hundred turkeys that, that they may or may not be able to get, if they're not able to get them all. Then we, the scene.
Food bank?
Food bank, thank you, would be probably, they'd be working with whichever.
Well, that doesn't sound like a bad price. Sounds like he's turning them over wholesale.
Yeah.
Oh yeah, he's, yeah.
It's more convenient for the, for the town people. And then I planned on, if they can take one, we can spread the message because Winco gives you one for free. And a lot of times I end up with, I could get two or three, so maybe I'll get a couple and bring one down.
I think that the, that the food bank would like to be able to take.
A few extra.
Not, they just can't manage.
They can't freeze that many down there.
No, it ends up being like. What would that be? It's like thirty or forty cases. So that's how much storage they have to have in the freezer because there's six per case. When we used to hand them out.
Storm up at the school too, another thought.
Well, and I think they network with Randy during the fall can sale.
Okay.
To get like corn and beans at the, at the price of the, is he a select market now? I think it's select market. So they typically, that's kind of the give and take. They'll buy food from the can sale, which benefits him as a seller. And he stores the turkeys and gives them a cost and they kind, it's kind of a give and take to benefit both. Or that's how we've done it in the past. But the extra money, we did do one year, we had somebody give us a gift card to like Freddy's. And we went and got like hot cocoa and things that they're not going to buy that are kind of extra holiday like fun things for the kids. You know, little bags of candy or something to kind of make it a little more special, not just the basics. So that is always fun too.
Yeah, and Mr. Frenell is amazing. I mean, he was really, really excited about participating in the community and being able to give back. He said, that's what we're here for. So he's a good guy, he's a good guy.
Okay, can I make a motion?
Yes.
Make a motion that we take twenty one hundred dollars out of the food bank. And that transferred or out of our contingency fund and transferred to the food bank for the turkey program this year.
Motion's been made, is there a second? And second's been made. Would you call a roll, please step?
Just a second, sorry. Counselor Webb?
Aye.
Counselor Ash?
Aye.
Counselor Allen?
Aye.
Counselor Norman?
Aye.
Counselor Hubbard?
Aye.
Counselor Carey.
Thank you all very.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Susan, for advocating for the people that need it.
Okay, unfinished business B, Habitat for Humanity.
Yeah, I just wanted to close the loop on this. We've got other people coming forward. We talked about having a policy in place that I never seen anything come forward. That was the last time. Now I hear it's ARPA. So I just want to make sure if we're going to do this or not and let the person know it's keeping them hanging. They already picked a person for the house and we asked, maybe you find out if they actually were going to move forward with the building permit or.
Yeah.
Maybe more information.
I don't know what pol, I'm not following on what policy was supposed to come forward.
So at one time you said that and it triggered a memory.
Okay.
There was discussion about the city putting together a policy for when these kinds of things come forward, how all these donations are made.
Okay.
It wasn't specific to this property or even, I mean, I guess it could entail like. The food bank's request, but it was to when nonprofits or people will come forward requesting donations for items. There's a policy established to follow. Is that what you remember?
Okay.
All of a sudden it's like ding.
Yeah, I didn't remember that.
But it wasn't on our shoulders. It was like someday in the future.
We'll do a policy.
We'll actually do a policy.
It's a conversation between Counselor Webb and, and. Policy in place, so that's why we delayed the.
Oh, okay.
And then I think we're waiting to hear actually some more information. You were going to go back to her and find out when they were going to actually.
Yeah.
Going to move forward with a billing permit. You said nothing had been submitted.
Yeah, I don't believe anything at this time has been submitted for them. I know they did pick a Vernonia person. That was in the paper and we knew just ahead of that that she was, she was picked. And I did talk to Jennifer and tell her that ARPA didn't, as a one time, one person project. Under the same categories, it didn't fit for us just to hand them the SDCs. And then I didn't think that council had totally gotten their stomachs around the setting the precedent. That we were going to give this money to one person and what do we say to the next person that comes? So that's what I did share with Jennifer. So I don't believe she's waiting on us for their money.
Yeah, I just wanted to close the loop. And left off is Counselor Ash and I both indicated we'd like to help. And then you were going to check into some more ARPA digging.
Yeah.
And we wanted to make sure the project was going to go forward. Then I saw something in the paper about it.
Yeah.
And just, I didn't want to leave her hanging. Either yes or no, I think we owe that answer pretty soon.
Yeah, and I've told Jennifer, the one that came to visit you, that it is a no from us as far as requesting the ARPA funds. I said she could always come and request something different of council, but if it's just forgiving those fees with ARPA funding, it wasn't going to fit.
And, and, and her organization is a side branch of the National 501(c)(3), you were saying?
Yeah, so they're all like, how we have the Oregon Food Bank and then we have little pantries. That's what Habitat for Columbia County is, is like a, under the umbrella of the National Habitat for Humanity. So their funding source can be quite large than being part. part of a national organization. Typically, when they go out on their own accord in the communities, they get more benefits asking the communities to participate either in volunteer hours or helping with snacks or doing, you know, the different things. When they engage with the community, it's usually not the municipalities fronting their projects.
So I think I remember something being discussed, um, to the effect of if, if she's asking for ARPA money and kind of insinuating that that has happened in other cities, can you go to the other cities and present how that was?
Yeah, none of our other cities gave ARPA funding like that.
Okay. That was, I think, one other.
I believe Scapus gave money, but it was out of something different. They were not worried about setting the precedent apparently. But it wasn't ARPA funding. I believe, is it, do they have their own? I want to say they're the ones that have that kind of policy pot to play with in their funding. Did you, do you know that someone else has that too? Or what?
No, I have a question.
What is your question?
How much have they paid for that lot?
Under lot value. They get, they got a really good deal.
Oh, that was a Bruce question. It's a statement.
A question posing as a statement. So they got a good deal on that lot when they bought it.
So, so the answer is no for the ARPA then?
Yeah.
Ball.
And I said, come back and request something else that maybe isn't just out, an outlay of cash or us forgiving you fees require of everyone else. And she never came back.
I guess I hadn't heard it was an absolute.
Oh, yeah.
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 Okay. Okay. Any business from the departments?
Oh, we got new business there.
Oh, pardon, I'm sorry. Business, staff report, city council priority list.
Okay, so I got, I checked the priority list as you guys scored it. I did remove a couple things because they got completed.
Yeah.
Um, but, but this is the current list. Um, yeah, this is your current list in the order based on your votes of the organization rating. And I did update a few little notes, but it's a more current list.
Notice the lights are off at the skate park.
Off or on?
Off at night.
Oh, like going off at 11:00?
They go off at 10:00.
I don't know what time they went off. They're off at 5:00 AM. That's all I know.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
They go off at night. At 10:00, do they come on?
They come on, uh, well, right now I think they're coming on earlier because they're set to winter hours. They come on at like 5:30 or 6:00 and they go off at 11:00.
Last weekend, we were by there at 9:00 and they weren't on.
No, the little metal thing had slipped over the I and I went and removed it. Because someone said, the skate park lights haven't been on for three days. Are you guys punishing us? And then I went and where the I had a little metal bracket, it slipped halfway over it. So I took it off. And then I asked my daughter when she went down there, were they on? She's like, they're back on. So.
So I should back this up.
Okay.
Basketball hoop lights weren't on at 9 o'clock.
Yeah, they're not on. The timer that is coming with the memory to, for when the power blinks, has not shown up yet. They took out the other timer, believing the other timer had shown up and it wasn't here. And I said, don't waste your time putting it back right now. We'll put it in. So yeah, the basketball court has no lights as of right now.
Okay.
I said, next time, don't take the timer out unless you have the other one in hand. The learning curve around here. So itching to get it done. And then they didn't have the part. So if this all looks good, then you guys could just formally kind of adopt this as your fiscal 2223 plan of projects before.
With a motion tonight?
Okay. Just so that it's in the public.
Mayor? Go ahead, Counselor Webb. So our number one item, uh, the Corey Hill I and I. And then the, the note says this is ongoing part of springboard. Now, I think we've had this discussion. It, it is and it isn't.
Right. But the, then the title now says Clatsett Manhole Fountain. That's what you guys wanted added?
Right. But we're also looking at the priority to jump onto the low hanging fruit out of our smoke tests and vacuum tests in Corey Hill to try to knock down that I and I situation for the, the fountain.
So what if I add to the notes, Corey Hill fixes ASAP?
Yeah, that would be fine with me.
Okay, I've added it.
Have me a report back yet.
Which report?
Vacuum test done?
No, I haven't got the rating version back yet. Any other corrections to the priority list? That I missed or things you think were needing to be on there that aren't?
Any other question, any discussions for priority list?
So I did see one here, which I was assuming that got done. Crack sealing everywhere for 2022. So that should be deleted then if they.
Well, I know, but I left it on there because it's an 80 hours each fiscal year is what I put in the notes, that there's a minimum of 80 hours each fiscal year.
Every year.
So I'll just, I'll put ongoing instead of the year in there when I fix the final version.
Didn't we talk about at one point that any items that become just a regular yearly maintenance?
We're gonna take off, but we haven't done that yet. They didn't talk about which ones to remove as a whole, as a group. Yeah.
See, there's a change on the Haytham River Park playground.
Yep. We have almost everything in except they shorted us one wavy slide.
Oh.
Oh, good riddance.
From the manufacturer. So we have to, it's coming. That's the last thing. So they just have it blocked on the one side. So they.
Been down a wavy slide?
No.
I got corse by second graders and I had a headache for like three. Do not recommend.
No adults down the wavy slide.
It's just epic.
Something that's not on here that we all talk about is cameras at Spencer Park.
Yeah.
I don't know if we should put it on there so we don't forget about it or.
But that's during the priority work sessions. This is just adopting the priority list you guys have already established and ranked. So this is the order you guys ranked them at the last section of priority. So number one, two, three, four.
Yeah. So I have Spencer Park cameras already on my brain. And just to give you a little insight, GorgeNet is asked us for the placement of what we want, and they're looking into supplying us with free Wi-Fi for them. So we're, those are in the works even though they're not on this list.
Get it on the next meeting agenda, JR, I think.
Like an update?
Yep.
Yeah. Making sure you guys like the sites that I'm proposing for GorgeNet to plan out.
I've been wanting to talk about that real soon anyway.
Okay, we'll get on the next agenda.
Okay.
But it is in the, in the motion even though it's not.
It was. Got some issues.
We were looking.
I stole hot water.
And Tim was on the other side of the hallway.
Yeah. So
By daylight.
We had the $46,000 one.
Right.
Then we went with Hazen Camp and his was still like 28 something. And we were still lacking the Wi-Fi. That was a big component because Zipley was gonna charge us an arm and a leg to get it on our side of the highway. GorgeNet believes they won't have that same problem, how theirs is coming down the main drag. So yeah, we can bring you back what we had proposed. One option would probably be the ones Counselor Webb had mentioned to you guys, kind of the click and play where they have a housing and they just click in. As long as you have Wi-Fi, you can remote view them. So that will be probably one option. I can bring back a standard wired in option too, if that's something. But yeah, we definitely need something, even just to get a visual on who's using. So when we see problematic activity, we can go back four hours and question everyone that walked in. Was it like this when you got there? You know, kind of pinpoint. But yeah, we can put it on the agenda.
Yeah, I, I would like more proposals. Just, I think it's really important, but I also think that the cost of the project needs to correlate to the cost of the damages.
Right. Can't be $50,000 when we've had seven damages. Yeah. Okay. Got it.
If you get a chance, you might try to call Tony Crigger.
Okay.
He's got him up on his property.
Oh, okay. See what his version is and.
Yes.
He likes him. Okay.
I believe he, with the solar charger, they got him on sale. They were about $300 a camera.
Okay.
And they all communicate together.
That'd be good to know.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I guess that's somebody that's using some that a person could.
Yeah, we could visually see him and know what they're getting.
You know, see a little bit how it works to know more instead of trying something and find out.
Right. Remember some? Yeah. Okay. I'll give him a call before your guys' meeting and.
Yep.
See if I can get information on it.
Anything else on the priorities? I'd like to make the motion to approve the priorities as categorized?
I'll move we adopt the attached priority list as the 2223 city priority projects list.
Motion's made. Is there a second?
Well, second.
Thank you, Counselor Webb. Do you call a roll?
Counselor Webb?
Hi.
Mayor Hilbar?
Hi.
Counselor Norman?
Hi.
Counselor Ash?
Hi.
Counselor Allen? Motion carries.
Thank you. New business, staff report, planning contract, UGB fact finding.
So we discussed this, Stephanie discussed this with you guys at your last meeting, that we are planning for, doesn't have the capacity. And then when they price out, hiring someone to complete the UGB, it was over $70,000, which seems way too high for all the work that Matt did and where we thought it was at, at the end. So we're proposing that we hire Winterbrook for, under this contract for a not to exceed $2,000 fact finding mission to see what are the elements we need to complete and put pricing on those. So we get a more realistic view of what's been completed, what's left to do. The memorandum is there, scope of work, that's exhibit A. And then the standard, Ruben is presenting this personal services contract that just outlays our boilerplate, the stuff we want and the not to exceed and the term, how, how quickly we want it completed and all of that.
So we have all the documents and everything, all the.
Yeah, we have everything Matt had done.
Place ready to go for them to look at.
Yeah, they could, could apply them via internet or big file transfer or whatever.
Three weeks is good.
Three weeks.
That's what they're saying.
That's what they're saying. And we, we asked that it be completed by December 31st of 2022.
For $2,000.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The fact finding. So they're gonna look at what needs, still needs to be done and how much would they charge us to complete those tasks?
So even if we didn't go with them to complete the task, we would have the, what needs to be done, an idea of proposed cost.
Yeah.
So it's worth it.
They have really good reviews from other municipalities. So if it's reasonable, it'd probably be beneficial. They've done this kind of thing in other places. So might be worth our while when they do propose.
Happened to, um, I assume you didn't let them know about the previous bid?
I don't think we did.
Conversation with them. But our hope at the staff level is that we have a great experience with this firm and end up just contracting them.
And that they'd be willing to come here.
Their rates here are higher than when they're your normal contract firm.
Right. Yeah, these are like a.
Price rate.
Yeah, small jobs, a little bit higher.
It does a lot. Does feel competitive, price wise to the current.
Yeah.
Great.
But if the paperwork gets completed and we can move forward, that's worth something too.
Right.
Counselor Ash, excuse, pardon me, but did you ask if they let the other firm know how much it was gonna be? Is that what your question was? That's what I was gonna ask. Good, good to hear that.
Yeah, we didn't.
Okay.
We just said, we need this, our.
If they come back at $67,000, you save 1,000.
Right. Our current firm, we just said, didn't have the capacity to do the job. So we were trying to network with them.
Well, they'll probably give you a fair price if they're trying to earn your business, right?
Yeah. And other communities seem to really like their work. So, and they're not a, only from home firm like our current, that won't even come here.
Yeah. Something's better than nothing. There's only one way to go.
So at what price level are we gonna call Uncle and say, maybe this isn't even worth doing? I mean.
Well, they're, they're just giving it to us. Then it's coming back to you guys to say, move forward and where, how would we pay for that and stuff?
So long, I'm almost forgetting why we wanted to move the boundaries, you know? I mean, I know what we want to do, but.
Yeah.
Been a couple of years.
Yeah.
Well.
Well, knowing the hostile will help that decision along.
Ultimately, other than the Gwen's Hill out cherry.
Yeah.
Or no, because that's the last kind of area to develop in the city limits that's not in floodplain. So by closing that, then we pull the potential that those people could annex in and that could become buildable.
So are they gonna tell you the feasibility and the probability of the state letting us do this though? After we spend the money, get all the stuff done, submit it into the state and the county and all that, and then have someone say, no, you already have a buildable lands?
No. So we don't, to change the UGB line, you don't have to, that is not, to bring something into the city limits is what they look at, the buildable lands inventory and whether you have enough years of buildable land going forward. That, but if we close the UGB line and someone up by Stephanie says, I want to annex in, then that's how you get around it having to be the buildable number.
Got you. Okay. Thanks for your.
We were talking about it before, many, many moons ago. Matt had talked to his contact at the state and with it being a push.
Yeah.
Subtracting down, down.
Down there and that little.
And our 20 acres of.
And this little piece.
That area and putting it over there. It's almost an exact swap. It's essentially a slam dunk. And it does go safe, but it's not.
It's not something they're gonna even look at because it's so give and take.
Yeah. And these people, this firm will put together an analysis. So this is how much we think it'll cost and the processes and essentially your likelihood of getting it approved.
Yeah.
We actually did a lot of work on this and we were almost ready to submit one application.
Yeah. So that's why that number seemed so crazy is we were like, wait a second, that was a master planner or a senior planner. How is it that we're not where we think we are? Like in the cost of it? We were like, that seems ridiculous.
It's good on you for not just saying, oh, keep going.
On Steph. She's like, this is, no.
Got an extra hundred away here.
Right. I think people think cities and they just think deep pockets. And that's never been the case here, really.
Yeah, they, they do.
The frustrating thing is we already paid them to do that work.
Yeah. We thought we were, that's what we were paying them to do. And it just was like little increments of it and not very much. So you live and learn.
So you just want permission to have you sign the contract for the $2,000 exploratory estimate, basically.
Yeah. So if you just make a motion improving the investigative project and authorizing me to sign the service agreement that's presented, then that'll work good.
Go.
I just put the synopsis and then let you word it however.
Oh. All right. I'll make a motion that we approve staff to move forward. New planning for. New planning firms identify the remaining pieces that needed to happen and complete the U G B project in Bononia. I understand this, a couple thousand dollars a bid.
And then authorize me to sign.
And authorize Joseph Mitchell to sign it.
Don't move, is there a second? Okay, sounds like Council on a second. Would you call a roll, please, Stephanie?
Council Allen?
Hi.
Mayor Hilbert?
Hi.
Council Norman?
Hi.
Council Allen?
Hi.
Council Webb?
Hi.
Motion carries.
Okay, and one more new business item, Park Host. J R.
Looking at me for?
You're the one that put it on the agenda.
So our Park Hosts do a good job, they work hard a lot, I understand, how come they don't, do they get health insurance?
They're not employees.
They're not employees, okay. So. I'm thinking. How come council and a park get involved in hiring or letting the Park Host go? They're not employees. So I'm just thinking sometimes there's frustration on both sides, I just wonder if, if the council had a say in who gets hired or the parks recommends it first to council, just like we do committee members.
Yeah, we've, they've never done it that way, it's always been done through administrative staff.
Right, well, that's proposing we change that.
What purpose?
For a purpose that it gives our Park Hosts another avenue to go to. The people that they can say, hey, this is working, this isn't working, or if they get let go, it takes a vote of three council members to let them go.
So the reason we don't engage them with councils, council is really the policy and procedure setters. They're not the pickers of staff or employees other than me and their other contracted employees like the engineer, uh, planning, that kind of thing.
Right, but I was thinking they're not employees, they're not staff.
Right, but any volunteers or stipend quasi employees, which is what Park Hosts are, goes through administrative staff. Just because there's the cover of H R, there's all those things that you have to make sure, you know, that you're doing right, so. And it's not like a free for all pick, it's an apply, meet the criteria, background check, yes, you fit. And the go away, I, as the staff, as the head of the staff, I would not want to come and have to publicly explain to you why I let someone go. Because one, that's probably going to be some sort of defamation of character suit when I tell you why I let them go publicly. I don't want any more lawsuits. Because I'm going to have to say, you know.
I personally think it's not the best idea because you're out at the airport working a full time job. I'm, I, I mean, a lot of us have full time jobs. They're in the front lines, if you will, and front trenches, they, because they work here in this, within the city hall. They have the, the know how and the, and the, and they don't really know what's going on.
Yeah.
At our parks, a lot more than the council does. And that's just part of her job, that's part of administrator's job.
It just kind of muddies the water because if someone is friends with one council member and they're not following the policy or procedure for requesting supplies or telling us about issues, then it's kind of a third person that maybe isn't here all day that comes to me and says, hey, this isn't, the Park Hosts told me this isn't happening when they never told me. And I'm the one that can order supplies, I'm the one that can get them better stuff, I'm the one that can, does that make sense? It's kind of a roundabout way and we've been trying to avoid that because it just leads to bad feelings on the Park Hosts account or unclear expectations of them with staff, it's just a weird like middle man where when they have issues like Bob and Dory and like Suzie, she just emailed me today that there's, or yesterday that there's bees, there's bees, I took pictures, I sent things. I just send, get in here in the morning, see your pictures, ten's out there with spray, so it's like, that's kind of a easier back and forth, but.
Now, I, I had a letter from a citizen last week about a Park Host issue. And I, my response to that citizen is I'll go and try to find out, I'll, I'll go to the city administrator and find out. And that, that's my job is, is not to handle it, not to go down to the Park Host and it, it's to go right to the city administrator and work it out.
Yeah.
So that's, that's the way we do it, you know, and I get a lot of calls from different, a hundred different things.
Yeah.
But.
Can I address the council?
Yeah.
When, when I sat on the Parks Committee and I was the chair for about ten years. We had several situations with Park Hosts who would come to the Parks Committee and come to me, you know, I'd pay to drive through the parks to see what they drove. They'd wave me down and want to tell me about what was wrong and what was happening. And I always said, you need to go to the city administrator, I can't do anything about this. And it, it really just was just that same, put the middle man that didn't belong there in that position. And it, and it was very frustrating for me to always kind of be approached for things that were, were not my responsibility as that position. I would just add to what, what you're hearing from, from some other people, but somebody who's in that position at one time. Thank you, very appreciate.
Because is there some issue you think isn't getting resolved? Because if there is.
I'm not saying there is, I didn't get a letter or nothing like that and what do you, I'm just, I'm not saying that we haven't had park issues, uh, posts that needed to go bye bye, I'm not saying that either. I'm just saying if they're not employees, I just wonder why the Parks Department or the council has no say so in who we hire or who we maybe potentially let go because I'm wor, I am slightly worried that they have issues and they're afraid to speak up because afraid of retaliation. So I know they're supposed to come to council once or twice a year and give reports, but I've never seen that happen.
They're supposed to go to the Parks Committee.
Oh, Parks, excuse me.
They're supposed to go to the Parks Committee once or twice just to get familiar with them, let them know new things going on or how it's working, the new playground they put in or whatever. Yeah, I, I don't believe there's been any retaliation, I, I might not agree with how they want to fix something, but it might be that we don't have the money, I mean, I know for a number of months Bob was really upset about the showers, but we had no money to fix them until the next fiscal year kicked in, so I had Bob and Dory come in and go through the budget and be like, look, we have zero money in June. We can't even start until I have money in July for your project and then he was like, oh, well, I didn't even know that money was an issue. It's an issue, so and, and for the most part, I'm connecting with them more often than.
And I, I think that's probably the key is.
Yeah.
The head of the city gets out of the office and goes down with a cup of coffee, says, how you doing, once in a while.
Oh, yeah.
Probably do that, but anyway, I'm thinking, I wonder if we should invite them, I think we should, to this committee thing in October. I mean.
Well, isn't it, it's, it's for the process with council and the liaisons.
Yeah.
It's not for.
They're a little bit different, their process would look different, it would look like you got a supply request, text me or Angie, we'll get on the supply list. You got an issue, text me or Angie and we send out the guys to fix your issue or cut down your tree or install the new latch or whatever it is. It's kind of like, in a weird way, they're not an employee, but they come to the top of the staff to get their stuff dealt with. They don't, you know, it doesn't have to come up to us, they just call us directly or like Suzie, send me pictures.
I, I think it would be beneficial if they were there, we heard staff say, this is how you do it and the council hears it all because like, like Scott says, if you cruise through the park, you're going to get an earful about something eventually from somebody.
Yeah.
So, you know, maybe just clarify, I mean, I think, obviously we're going to talk about other things too, but I, I do think their important function for the city.
Yeah.
They provide all the funding and, and this, and keep things running and it provides the parks for all of the citizens, not just, I mean, they're dealing with the campers and out of corners, but in reality, it's keeping the parks going for all of us and I.
Oh, no.
Important function that, uh, you know, even if we just show our appreciation somehow, you know, at, once in a while, I think, you know, you probably do, I don't know, but. It's like, it just helps retain them, you know what I mean, I, I think we've had, well, we've had Suzie now for a couple, three years, which I think uh, the revenue is doing quite well on the parking down there and I haven't heard any major uh, fights or anything happening down there. Yeah, she's, she's.
She just takes a bet.
It's tough down there.
Get out of here.
And I'm not down at Anderson Park much to tell you the truth, but.
Um, what, the letter we got was a complaint from a citizen.
Yeah, I didn't know what it.
Yeah, so it was just to Rick and I and we've dealt with that.
Yeah.
Her back and dealt with the Park Hosts.
Like you say, we're not going to make everything happen.
That's the weird thing, if they came, if they were, if they're, if council and the Parks Committee were intermediaries, I get a call from a citizen saying something went down with the Park Host, who's disciplining them? It's me, right, so that's the weird thing is if you guys were in the middle but weren't the disciplinarian when an issue came up, then they're kind of like, who do I listen to, who do I talk to, who do I have to follow what they say? And so that's kind of where the middleman didn't work because sometimes council, an individual counselor would agree when we had the past Park Hosts, not Bob and Dory, would agree with what that person, they were saying. But it wasn't a directive of the whole council and it definitely wasn't a directive of staff, so they believed their issue has been heard, but then it goes nowhere because council isn't talking about it publicly, does that make sense? So it's kind of like frustrating for them because they.
I mean, you know, we can get stuck in the middle too, is what I'm saying.
Right.
So.
Yeah.
But I just want to make sure that they, if, if there's a way we can change it or improve it to where our camp hosts don't feel like if they complain about something, they're, they're just going to get run off for bringing up issues or something.
No, they might get told it can't happen immediately, but most of the stuff, I'm like, oh, okay, oh, okay, oh, we'll order you that, oh, we'll get that. I mean, it's more of just a keeping it nice and accessible and fixing the issues we see when they see them. Um, and as quick a time as we can.
Yeah, well, anyway, I just thought I would, I was just wondering if they were, I, I didn't think they were city employees, but it seemed like they're working full time and.
Yeah, they're quasi because they do have a number of hours they're slated and duties they're slated to do, but we don't require them to sit there all weekend, right? I mean, it's not like a, I think that's one of the misnomers of people in the Park Hosts is like, if I knock on the door, the Park Host should be there. No, the Park Host has a life and doctor's appointments and family gatherings and they're here to do this many hours for us in this specific job. And then they're free like any person to go do what they're going to do.
What do they do when they're gone for a week or vacation, it's just.
They have to line that up, up with us so that we cover those rounds or we cover the duties and most of them, I don't think about issue with either park.
When I was the Park Host at Anderson.
Yeah.
When I was the Park Host at Anderson Park over a year, I was hired by Julian. I worked for her. I got paid through her.
Yeah.
I was, um, anything that had to do with Anderson Park, I went through her.
Yeah.
I knew what my jobs were, I just did my jobs and I was free on my own time, I mean, but.
Well, and that's even, it's even hard with the public work staff because they'll go there and all the Park Hosts are like, hey, you got to do this. And they're like, call city hall because my work comes down a chain.
Sure.
In a work order fashion, call them and tell them, they'll put a work order in and so that's how we do it so that they aren't stopping whatever they're, they're doing to start doing something Bob needs or Suzie needs, they're just saying, pushing it so that it comes down the line in their mailbox like the rest of the jobs. They're trying to just be efficient and not have too many masters and people.
And we, we currently don't have one at Nalhale River.
No, we, staff's kind of having an issue with that, we have, we, we've had a number of people express interest. None of them are physically able to do the work.
Right.
So one option that we talked about in the interim, just for presence and security, is perhaps just having a tenant for a year, um, because Mitch and Tim are doing the rounds out there and keeping the park up and take, collecting the money and checking on people paying fees as part of their normal park rounds. Um, and we just haven't had any applicants that can physically do the, the work. They love the idea of being a Park Host, but then when we say, okay, you got to blow this off, you got to weed, weed whack this, you got to mow this, they're just kind of like, well, I'm too old for that. Yeah.
That, that parks a little bit of work because there's a lot of.
There's a lot of.
A lot of weeding and, and pine needles and.
Yeah.
Then if you're going to walk back and forth from the camp host site into the park, back and forth checking.
Yeah.
You're not going to want to be, uh.
You're going to have to be sprightly.
Yeah, you're not going to be broke down like.
Right, that even makes me tired, so. We're kind of hoping the perfect applicant shows up, but the ones that heard our past one had left and applied, when we started talking about the work, they're just like, ah.
Wouldn't close down to getting another camp host.
No, if someone walked in the door and wanted to live in a trailer and was able to do the work and was our person, man or woman, we'd be all for it.
I know Suzie's here, but I will say it in front of her anyway. I think we've talked about and I think we should, as a council, maybe think about this and mull it over about the lake camp hosts getting at least a percentage of the parking fees because that's becoming a bigger and bigger job and then if we're going to be developing another campground there also. So it might not be something that happens right away, but I don't know, I think they should probably get something there for all their efforts checking on the parking, because I remember when the parking was four or five thousand dollars a year. And now, last I looked, it was over twenty thousand and I think that's partly to do with COVID, obviously, but I think it's, has to do a lot with having a camp host that's, that's physically onsite and, and giving people like me tickets and even though I had a slip and watchdog in it, you know, so I think if the effort's there and the money, the money levels coming in, maybe we should, as, as a stipend or something, there should be part of that money going just as an incentive to keep the parking going for us, there, it might be money well spent. And, you know, if you're only talking a couple of thousand dollars a year, if it was like ten percent or whatever, like Anderson Park. But it's just something that I think maybe we should consider.
Yeah, the current agreements with the Park Hosts that have camping, it is related to that. And they do have, you know, reservation duties or collecting money duties, so the duties are a little bit different, but if the park wagon wheel or whatever the campground, then I would assume the lake campground, that would just be the same as the other ones with the campground. I don't know how we do it, uh, short of like the Parks Committee recommending it to council or something and kind of pointing where in their budget that money, because currently their budget's all planned out, right? There's an estimated of bringing it in, there isn't an estimated of taking that out of somewhere, so that would be a discussion with them of what's left in their budget to play with if that was something they're interested in or you guys are interested in.
Well, yeah, I mean, we've got our budget set for this year, but.
Yeah, but I mean, if the wagon wheels go, we design it and it's implemented, then that becomes just another park with a campground and the Park Hosts agreement would reflect that with the stipend of the overnight like it is at the other ones with camp, well, right now, we're not paying anyone, right? Because Mitch is collecting the money, so all that money is coming into airport, but, or Nalhale River, but.
Mm hmm.
Yeah.
You got any vandalism out there?
No, we had the one, well, the camp host has left his trailer.
Right.
It, well, gave it to someone and then that person started to break it down in the park, so we had some debris there and some garbage, but they've since.
Having the big issues there that we're having here, so it's like the dirt bags are living right here in city limits or something.
Yeah, I think there's quite a few people with addiction problems and they're locals that grew up here that just are in a bad way.
And I don't think they all have.
Right, so they're kind of on foot, that's their mode of.
Fucking past basically drug reform, jail reform, you get arrested, you can go to get treatment instead of jail, is that not working?
You can, the problem is, is you actually have to catch them with the drugs or catch them selling the drugs, which with our limited force right now is almost impossible.
Yeah, I know it's not just Brannonia. I mean,
Yeah.
I listened to the news. I got friends that live in Portland, up, I don't know, edge of felony flats, they call it or something. He literally nightly hears gunshots within a block or two of his house.
Yeah.
Most nightly. It was like, wow.
Well, and it's, it's just, the Oregon laws are so tight on what, you can pull someone over, you cannot question them about anything except the reason you pulled them over.
Well, yeah, that's
Can't say, have you been drinking tonight? That's now not something you can say unless you pull them over for swerving.
I almost wanted to tell Mr. Cook that, but it's like, you have a million cops, but if they can't do their job, they're just gonna drive around away about him.
Right.
So it's frustrating.
Yeah.
Uh, that the Oregon legislators chose to, uh,
We've, we have, as the police and staff, we have trespassed a number of those people from public areas, the library, parks. Um, and we're nearly succeeding on getting one signed back into treatment. So we're, when they interact with us, our goal is to get them with community action team because they can help them get the resources for treatment. They can help them get a flip phone if their phone's broken, if they agree to go into treatment. So we're always trying to network them with the social service programs to kind of the, the bummer part is they come back here. And when you come back to where you used and the people you used with, it's almost an instantaneous revert back into your addiction. So I wish some of them would get better and go somewhere else for a few years and get themselves together, but
Oh, and it's a, them withdrawal symptoms are, are the motivator for so much crime.
Yeah. It's really kind of an epidemic. And it's weird, it's an epidemic here in like the 28 to 34-year-old Brannonia kids. There's a whole set of that age group that's just having something happen that they're self-medicating with drugs.
Keep beating a dead horse, so go ahead.
Thank you, JR. This is from the departments. Okay. Ordinances and resolutions.
Nothing tonight.
Correspondence.
So I just wanted you guys to see, this has been on Facebook and it's posted in different places around town. So Keep It Local Columbia County with the Small Business Resource Center is doing a number of things for marketing. They have other ones about, you know, expanding your notice and getting people to your door and how to promote your sales. This is just kind of the marketing tools, but they have other ones that they're planning on doing coming up. And so, yeah, they're gonna use the City Hall, will be their first one. Hoping all the businesses or people that are interested in it come and use the resource or if they can't come, do the Zoom one from home. But yeah, Sierra, um, that we met, well, Rick met her when we did the grand opening of Eclipse's. Um, and Jason Moon are instrumental in trying to get these programs out there. So hopefully people take advantage of it.
Joseph, is this part of the Dale Latham organization?
No, it's part of the Paul Vogel. Dale Latham was this
Sorry, Paul.
Betrayal. Yeah. Yep. Yeah, the Columbia Economic Team and the Small Business Resource Center that we put money towards.
Thousand dollars.
That's, this is coming out of that.
Right.
This is them hosting classes for Brannonia businesses to try and help them promote their business.
Now, we did that out of the, uh, out of the ARPA money.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, we thought at least that'd help.
Business set, yeah.
Business people here, and I hope they take advantage of it.
Yeah. I know Sierra's been in contact trying to get them all, the ones, you know, saying, hey, it's right down the street. It's just a City Hall, come, we're gonna, I'm gonna make coffee and stuff and kind of host.
I'll be here.
Yeah.
What time was that? Sorry.
It's, uh, eight
Eight thirty.
Eight thirty.
Yeah, okay.
So, yeah, that, I just wanted you guys to know, kind of, they're working on stuff and it's not, it wasn't just a idea. They're pulling that off, so.
It was a, it was a nice meeting and we actually, uh, did a grand opening on the ice cream.
Yeah.
Stand, yeah, that same day, and they were part of that. Also, and Tony Hyde also met with us and, um, Tony's kind of put a bug in my ear in the last couple of years about, um, Chamber of Commerce in Brannonia. So I am going to, um, kind of not forget about that. I, I put it in the back of my mind. I, I'm hoping some, uh, small businesses show up here. And, and kind of interested to, to see what the, what the interest is. And if there's quite a bit of interest, I, I would really like the city of Brannonia to get a Chamber of Commerce back here. I, I think it, it would behoove us financially, uh, with grants and, and different things like during the pandemic, we, because we didn't have a chamber here, we'd lost, I think, about seventy-five thousand dollars. We were not included in that.
The Chamber.
So, um, I plan on attending that meeting on the thirteenth and, and so we'll see what we can come up with.
Yeah.
I know, I know there's new business owners in Brannonia that may be interested and some may not be, but, um, we'll see. Okay. City Ministry report.
Okay, so I still have not figured out the ballards itch. I'm like, who said there needs to be ballards and how interested are they in them? So I'm still hunting that down. Um, I did send you guys the email that we did make the awards list for the Lake Campground Planning Project. They do hold their meeting September fourteenth, um, where they do the final vote. And then I'll go to the Parks Meeting. Typically, Mark sends out a, you know, he sent out the, hey, you're on the list. This is when the meeting is. Then he'll send a, hey, you've been awarded, these are your next steps. I'm gonna go share that. All the hoops we have to jump through for the money with Parks Committee so that we can start getting, uh, a bid doc out there to kind of engage a designer to help us design it.
And they're hoping to find out their ranking too, if that's
Yeah, I put in the request for that. We don't, typically, we weren't getting that back for like three months. I don't know why it's hard. They all filled out a piece of favor, but I, I did put in that request. So the dog park water is in, um, and people are using it. We did go out there, there's, we still need some tidying up work out there. And the guys still have to fix the lot across the street. They kind of cleared it, but they need to get gravel in there for parking and put up the sign for parking, but the water's in. No movement on the skate park crosswalk. They said, the guy that I engaged with said that he would probably come out at the end of summer, which it is the end of summer, but he's, has not sent me a date. But we're gonna set up a meeting for him to come on site and talk to me about putting a new crosswalk. That was the request of Mr. Hulse right by the skate park. And he did talk to me about, weirdly, and I didn't even pay attention to it till I was driving slow, but there's a crosswalk at Cherry, like on the road. But no sidewalks on either side. So that's one that ODOT will be doing. Um, and there's some other crosswalks that they have to fix. So he, when he comes out, we'll be discussing all those. Um, paving's complete. Public Works is still finishing Shoulder Rock. Went and did Shoulder Rock, and then we got some calls, hey, I used to have an approach here, or hey, you guys covered my approach, or the road's higher. So they've been going back and kind of addressing issues. I do have someone on lead that the road's enough higher that we're gonna have to do some sort of ramp. So I'm connecting with Community Action Team. They have a ramps program. Either they can sign a contract with someone and put a metal ramp that stays there as long as the homeowner needs it and then has their name on it and they get it back. Or they can come and build a wood ramp. The woman at the end of weed, her sister-in-law has, uh, brain cancer, and so she has to move her in a wheelchair in that slope. We did cold patch it all the way from the road to her sidewalk, but it's still too steep of a slope. So we're working, um, with other resources to get ramps. I also did a drive-through of Riverside to, Mr. Assad is trying to move forward his uh, conditional use permit. And there's two homes in there that have elderly people, um, with broken entrance ways. And so I'm networking them to get free ramps or free porches redone. Because one of the guys, I went to knock on his door and I stepped right through his wood. And the manager said, those people have not been out of their house in at least two years. And I'm like, that, that can't be good. So we're gonna try and network them. And then also, Community Action Team has programs that will help even single wide manufactured homes with weatherization and issues with rain. So we're trying to network. I'm like, I told my husband, Community Action Team, in my view, spends way too much money at the Highway 30 corridor. And Brannonia's in Columbia County. So you need to get some of your dollars over here. So hopefully they're gonna be helping those people. Got ramps. So we did, Parker Concrete did come and has done the grinding. They didn't do the big grinding. They decided to grind it by hand because the spots of, that we were off were little circles and little, not something that could be done, need to be doing, done finer. So they did come grade, grind those spots. And so now we're waiting on ODOT to give us their date. They're coming for inspection. Um, and then I noticed here the same marketing thing. And that's what I've got.
They were grinding Spencer today, I think.
Yeah. They're finishing all of them. Uh, we had them bid out of materials cost to do Yumatilla because they didn't lay that one, but it had a couple of spots, so they just threw us
They're checking and grinding before it's inspected and then
Yeah. We went out with, with our engineer and he laid all the levels and then we chalk marked what things were off and which way they were off. So all of the ramps had little circles and arrows and Parker took pictures.
And Yumatilla, and then on my way to the meeting tonight, he was grinding.
Yeah. So they're slowly trying to get all that done. ODOT, we're like, come on out because we know we're gonna be dang close if not perfect, so.
How's the exemption work though, for the Yumatilla?
Um, Robert said that's, he does all the paperwork for that. And he said that's, they, ODOT requested them to file the exemption because of the grade and because it's not really a sidewalk on the other side and all the issues with it. But they made us do it for their lawsuit, but they aren't gonna hold us to all
To wait till they approved or denied the exemption before the inspector?
No, it's all part of the same package. He filed for the exemption already.
Oh.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I looked at those trees up there. House there and, or a bollier and
Those sea ones?
Seen where it looked like maybe someone done some vandalism, then I actually stopped and got out of my car. I wasn't sure it was vandalism, but it looks like the little cedars are dying and the thing is just falling over, but I couldn't see where hopefully it was malicious or maybe it was
Oh, like a tube was tipped over?
The tubes are, about six of them fell over the other day. I don't know if Webb put some back up.
Oh, okay.
Looked and I couldn't see where, like the bamboo was broken really on them, but some of them, maybe a little, I don't know. But I looked at the seed, I don't know how many cedar trees are dying, but they didn't look good.
Well, he's been up, I don't know, he's on with us, but he went up there and watered them. But Dale, have you seen them tipped over?
Yeah, was that yesterday or the day before? I walked up there just to get some fresh air. And yeah, there was, I don't know, he's seven of them that were, and, and then they'd been vandalized. They were snapped off the ground. The, that bamboo is really tough and, uh, because I had to take my knife out in order to sharpen points onto them to get them back in the ground. Uh, there wasn't like a hole anywhere. They were broke off, so. Uh, it was only right in the, where all the brush, you know, right there around the peace tree where it was easy to get around, you get out in the sticker bushes. And none of those were messed with because probably get stickers, so. Yeah, we had somebody go through there and terrorize.
So I actually just walked the lot next to mine, which we planted this past spring. Um, and I saw the exact same thing, all the, not all, but a lot of the really strong bamboos were broken off at the ground and the mesh is over. And that's deer.
The deer are bad.
I wouldn't be surprised. I, last night, I went to RNS and back about 10 minutes. Um, and I saw like three deer there on the way there. And then on the way back, those were across, um, like across from the fire station on the south side. And, um, there were like four other ones.
Oh.
So I wonder if
Were your cedars, were your cedars eaten off?
Um, only two of them.
Because these, these didn't look like they were eaten on at all. And like I said,
Most of them didn't. And, and some of them
First instance since, uh, February when they went in. I haven't had other than that. I mean, and they were wide open there for quite a while. Well, I don't know. I don't know that bamboo's tough because
Yeah, that's a good, yeah.
I don't know. My wife's mad at those same deer ate the geraniums and all, so.
Oh, my gosh, they ate every petunia red blossom. I came home and it was just a green bush. I was like
I think we, we do have a violent buck in the area because he drove a three-inch apple tree in half and just broke everything off of it at my house. It's like somebody jumped on top of it, broke all the branches off, and then broke it like a foot off the ground.
Practice fighting.
Yeah.
There's no, it wasn't vandals, it was a deer.
So that's what I'm saying. No one's vandalizing next to my house.
No, no.
The deer are vandalizing next
Shoot. I didn't notice that.
I don't know. I'm not saying for sure. I'm just saying.
But it could possibly be a fake dog, is what you're saying.
Yeah. Lucky they're cute.
But to JR's point, those cedars aren't doing real great. Uh, I've watered them twice. Now we're kind of involuntary water, can tell them, and I'm a little reluctant to hit them again, but they probably could use it.
I'd water them.
Well, I mean, I think under voluntary, Dale, new plantings isn't off the table until like 12 or 10 or something, right?
Voluntary is just voluntary.
No, I know, but I think even in 12, there's something to do with new planting.
I think it's like food producing things and then every other day watering.
Yeah, or something like that. So I think you'd be okay to hit them one more time before we get too tight.
All right. Okay, anything else?
Were we at correspondence yet?
No, we're at me, my report.
City Minister report.
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Joseph. So we already did correspondence.
Yep.
We're at fifteen.
Fifteen items.
Items from the mayor and councillors.
One.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. John Brewer would like to make a nice request to fix the monster potholes on Nahalem where he lives now.
That, that work order's already in.
Huh?
That work order's already in.
Okay.
They're waiting for a little bit of drizzle so they can street sweep and then go, hold, patch them all. But it's in. Yeah.
No need to talk about it.
But he could also call City Hall.
I believe he did. I think that's how I knew about it. He did. Someone on Nahalem did call and leave me a message. So I did know about it.
I wasn't sure if he did that.
Oh, yeah.
Was instructed him, if you got something, send it to Joseph.
Yeah.
Then he says, I'm gonna come down there and then
Yeah.
I says, well, if you're not there, I'll bring it up.
No, I did put that order in. Our printer served, we had a part go out on the printer, so I couldn't print it. So I had this whole file of things to print, and that was one of the work orders. So it's printed in their box.
If a citizen makes a request about something, I'm at least mentioning it.
Yeah.
Anybody else?
Okay, done. One would be, I got an anonymous letter in the mail about having a park host at Spencer Park at Skate Park. No clue who it come from, just letting everybody else know.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think there's enough revenue or enough going on there to have a camp host there.
Yeah.
So that takes care of that. The other one is, uh, restroom issues at Skate Park.
The
A lot of people using the property around there rather than walking to the restroom at, by the basketball hoops.
Okay.
Is there a reason we're not using the restrooms that are already there?
It's snack shack?
Yeah.
Should be Should be, well, there is a little bit of a reason, they were on a timer, they should be going back to timer for fall ball, but one of the issues was that we've had so much vandalism trying to crowbar into that building that we had to get new door handles that just arrived, and Mitch is gonna put them in so that all the keys match just that building, so when we hand them out to fall ball people or softball people, it's not a key to everywhere. Um, and they've been getting into, they basically jimmy'd it so that you can't get the, um, the striker plate is now too far away, so when it extends, it doesn't catch, and so we had to just deadbolt them until we get the new handle on and the new striker plate. So that's why they're not open right now in this week, because Mitch is gone and the things just arrived. Um, we talked, I talked to Tony at Mini Mart, um, she asked me if we were putting in a porta potty. I said, no, um, but I, we did talk about putting signage and putting a sign along the back of the Snack Shack that says Restrooms, and then putting a sign below the Skate Park sign that says Restrooms are directly behind you or this way, so many feet, um, yeah, we did talk about that. So we're gonna be doing that stuff.
Yeah, let's say if we had it on a timer, it shouldn't be an issue, it's just.
Yeah.
Another set of, they gotta clean, but it would.
Yeah, Tim already has those on his rounds, it was just because the latch wouldn't click, the timer wouldn't work anyway, because it would try to hold it, but then there was nothing holding it. And then in Spencer, we actually had someone take the magnetic plate, and then they kicked in that vent so that they could go like this and make that release like someone's trapped inside. So, Tim and I are coming up with a mesh that bolted to the inside with bars over it, that venting was so flimsy, they could just pound it with their foot and break it right open. So I think it's mostly the people with addiction that have nowhere to sleep, that are trying to find a structure to sleep in, sometimes it's the dugout if it's warm enough, sometimes it was the porta potty that Jamboree left behind, and now it seems to be the restroom that they're trying to get in.
The Snack Shack is very popular with the homeless population here.
Yeah.
Now, we got somebody living in a car, I think, right?
We do.
At West Oregon Electric, a car's been parked there for like a month.
Yep.
It moves to a couple of different locations.
And it's had, it's had numerous tickets for that, so.
Uh, I never see anybody, but I see the car.
Yeah, and someone not wanting to change their circumstance.
We've had quite a discussion on, or mentioning the problem with drugs, and one of the items on the LLC priority list was Measure One Ten. I went over to the courthouse last week and I met with the district attorney and on some other things, and I asked him, what's the probability of that measure being overturned coming in the fall ballot? He, he said it hasn't come up, unfortunately. I think that's a big problem, I pers, that's my personal opinion, that that legalization or decriminalization of most of the drugs have been a big problem and it's just pre-ranged, so. Unfortunately, uh, that's what we're dealing with right now.
Yeah, I think they need to tweak it to be a stronger requirement for treatment, not an option that you say you'll go and you get out of a fine, like full fine or go to treatment.
I'll send you a video of Thirty-third Avenue in Portland, you wouldn't believe your eyes.
Oh, I know, what goes on there? Yeah.
Yeah, unfortunate.
Dale?
Yes, sir. Uh, yeah, I wanna thank the Public Works crew, um, after the paving was done up here, I was kind of eyeballing it, and I go, oh, I think I see a couple of issues here, and before I could say anything, uh, they've put some remedies in there. I know the water coming down off there was gonna kind of shoot towards one of the neighbors, right into his garage, and I go, oh, that's gonna be a phone call, but they've got a little berm in there now, so it looked like they spotted that one and, or headed that off. Uh, I'd like to thank David Burns for mowing the dog park, he's been doing some mowing down there, uh, and we all know Tim's just strapped, so, uh, anyhow, thanks to Mr. Burns for doing that.
Thank you, Dale. Hope you feel better soon. Oh, anything else? Okay, action item summary.
Okay, um, I have, that staff is gonna make sure that the peace tree gets on the website with a link to the National Peace Tree Projects website, um, and we'll be bringing back to council at the next meeting the resolution for the care and protection of it that's required as part of the agreement. Um, staff's going to connect with Sheriff Pixley and talk about, uh, Columbia County Sheriff's present for our hours and potentially doing more of the, um, Corey Hill kind of patrols to make it uncomfortable for people that want to do nefarious things. Um, we're going to bring back council to council and the next agenda, the camera, um, with as many of the options and ver, versions that I can get ahold of, the click and play being one, and then contact Tony Krieger to see what his is, um, and bring those options back to you guys, and then bring you the site map that we're planning on presenting to GorgeNet of where we wanted them based on, it's all based on old meetings and citing for old meetings. Um, and that's all I have for action. You got, did I miss anything?
Hmm. I was kind of glad Dave came down tonight, I mean, even if it's a little uncomfortable with the tone, I, I took it as a chance to help somebody get some kind of resolve, even if they didn't go away about it the way us in government have learned to go about it, but, uh, anyway, I took it as an opportunity to try to make a little bit of a difference in his frustration, so it didn't bother me, and actually, um, it's kind of nice to see a citizen once in a while show up, so. That's the way I took it, I hope nobody took it personal again, so.
No, I think, I'm, I think it's hard for people sometimes, because they don't know what's already happening with certain properties, and he keeps mentioning properties, and I know all this backstory, but it's not really ours to share that, that, hey, we are on it, hey, we are dealing with the issues of code there, and we know people are living there and they're, all of it. It's hard, because people are like, the city's not doing anything, and you're like, actually, sir, we have a file about this thing on that property, so it's not.
You just don't know.
Yeah.
But I think you could come and ask those questions a little without unloading, personally. I don't appreciate, I mean, I don't take it personally by any means, but I don't think it was.
That's why, that's why.
As it could have been.
Yeah.
Or as well received as it could have been, if it was handled a little.
That's why I asked the question, have you called nine-one-one and nobody showed up? Well, no, have you come down here? Well, no.
And he had read the article that discussed that exact thing, so there's a lot of things that I see that could have been done as homework first, but.
Well, and that's kind of the thing, we've always struggled with how to reach people, right? Because you put it on Facebook and people say, I'm not on Facebook, you put it in the paper, they're not reading the paper, so you're always gonna miss a few, and we haven't had a curmudgeonly barking session in a while. It kind of felt like, owe me to me a little bit. I was like, yes! I was, you know.
You need those.
There might have just lost it a little like that before, and I was like, it's not bugging me, Dave, at all.
Well, we shouldn't be here if you don't have a little bit of thick skin, right?
Right, I, and I think, you know, when someone, I speak like that, when I'm enthusiastic about something, my voice gets higher, it gets louder, so, that, yeah, I think he's all right.
Anyway, don't take him personally, doesn't know.
I agree with you, JR, I've been saying the same thing that he relayed there tonight, that, you know, we're gonna end up, this is gonna end up in being a bad situation for somebody. I mean, these people are pushing these citizens around, this thieving, and and we know what Vernonia stands for out here, we're not gonna tolerate a lot of that, somebody's gonna go off, and somebody's gonna be in jail, and it's gonna be a sad day, somebody's gonna be laying there with a big hole through them.
Yeah.
So, you know, and we're, it's frustrating for how we can't deal with this. I'm very angry with my state legislators that put us into this position, in this position. They have tied the hands of our police force, they've looked at Measure One Ten, they've let drugs run rampant, and, you know, did get placed a treatment program that was part of that. Uh, I know there was talk about doing drug, you know, bust, the police can't do a drug bust right now because they've lost all their leverage. They used to pick these guys up for minor possessions and use them for leverage to get to the drug dealers. That, that's gone now, so, you know, we've really shot ourselves in the foot, and the courts aren't helping this, because they've become more liberal and they don't seem to want to sentence or retain people, and they're revolving door out into the streets, so, um, you know, it's gonna come to a head. Uh, to Measure One Ten, there are two governor candidates that'll want to repeal it, so, um, keep that in mind.
I'm trying.
All right, get off my soapbox.
So there's two more action items, one was twenty-one to the food bay.
Thank you.
And then Steph to sign the agreement.
Thanks, Steph.
Thank you, Steph.
Always keeping us on our toes.
Yeah, doing a good job, Stephanie. Okay, if there's nothing else, I'll adjourn the meeting at nine-twenty, meeting adjourned.